Excuse me. My clock says six o'clock, so we're going to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Number two on the agenda is invocation, and for that we have Pastor Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. You know, I always need to practice, so thank you for letting me. Anyway, let's pray. Father, we do come this evening, first of all, we just are so grateful. Grateful for today, grateful for the beauty of the day, grateful for your love and protection and watch and care over us. Thank you that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Father, this opportunity to just stop and talk to you and reflect on the goodness of what you've done for us is a blessing. It's a blessing to gather and accomplish things for the community and for the betterment of those around us. We thank you for this council that works to that end and for this city and the leadership in the city that works to provide well for everyone that lives here. Lord, it is a blessing to be a community. Sometimes we forget how important it is to care for one another. Lord, you designed us to do that, so I thank you that government helps make that happen. And this evening, Father, we invite you to be in the midst of these people here tonight, provide leadership, provide wisdom, because, Lord, decisions sometimes can be extremely difficult. More than anything, just bless those that are here as they work together. We pray that in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Number three on the agenda is audience participation, and we have that on the video screens. We want to tell everybody out in Yahooland, whatever. Hello, and thanks for joining us. Please silence your phones so we can have a nice quiet meeting. And we need to note that we have a quorum present. On the consent agenda, A is action regarding the minutes February 21st. B is action regarding an individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for the conceptual design of McElroy Boulevard Phase III. C is action regarding Chert County Emergency Service District Number One American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Recovery Funds Agreement Amendment. I've been asked to pull D and E, so I will take a motion on A, B, and C, please.
Mayor, I move that we approve A, B, and C.
And Cindy, second. Everybody vote. And we pass. Item number D is action regarding resolution number 2023-04, supporting state rail funding for local grade separations, and for that we have Gabe Rayo.
Mayor, pro temp, council, good evening. In your packet, there's a brief letter that came from BNSF. They had requested the city's support to go to the legislature and request funds for railroad improvements throughout the state. So I really have no information on the matter, other than what's in the packet, and this is purely discretionary, so supporting the request is not binding in any way. It's just a goodwill measure to have BNSF go to the legislature and try to get funding.
Questions, council? Mary? Cindy?
I just, I guess you kind of answered the questions that I had, but I guess we're looking at a long time. Are we looking at trying to, you know, make those corrections ourselves prior to this, based on the condition of those crossings?
No. I think it's very generic. Maybe the city attorney. It's just a request for support.
That's right. We wouldn't have any further input on this matter or deciding which crossings, et cetera, might be eligible. It's just a measure of support.
Okay. Because, you know, like I said, I didn't know if, you know, we had plans to fix things and hope that this bill would cover portions of that any time in the near future.
Charlie?
Yeah? Well, I did some, because I knew nothing about this, and I actually did some research and stuff, and some of the stuff that Darren Proctor went over and looked at on the internet definitely greatly decreases risk by putting over passes into place. This isn't costing us anything, so even if it doesn't help us directly, it's helping Texas. So I definitely support it.
Just the paperwork doesn't cost us anything. Down the road, it might.
You're good. Okay, so I'll take a motion or vote on item D.
I'm going to motion through item four D.
Second. Mary? Everybody vote, please. Okay, item number E, action regarding a contract with Burleson Demolition for the demolition and removal of the existing house, metal full barn, asphalt along West McElroy, abandoned concrete house pad, chain link fence, and miscellaneous concrete on all lots, and grading of dirt at 30308 and 320 West McElroy. Gabe Rayo.
Mayor, pro temp and council, you'll recall, a few months ago, the city council authorized the purchase of a house located at the corner of McElroy and Elkins for future open space needs, and it'll be part of the library and senior center site. The scope before you, low bidder, I believe, was Burleson Demolition, is to do what's in the description. Larry Little, if you have any specific questions, could answer them. We've had probably our last three demolitions, maybe more than that, have been with Burleson. They're always responsive and do a good job, so with that, the specifics Larry may be able to answer.
Okay. Mary, questions? Cindy?
Yeah, I had a question on this one also. Was this part of our budget, or is this coming out of the bond package?
So you'll recall, we paid for the purchase of the land with our money, and that's where we've identified to pay for the demolition.
Okay, because it wasn't in here where that money came from to cover this cost, and I was just curious about that.
Sure.
Charlie? Questions? Nick? Paul? Okay, I just have one question real quick, and you may have answered it before. The cement at Bud Starnes' place, how come he didn't have that taken up? Isn't that kind of expensive to do? Larry? I'm sorry. I just wondered why when Bud Starnes had to tear that, his, the office down, how come he didn't have to remove his cement? I'm just asking.
I'm taking that was part of the agreement.
Oh, was that part of the agreement?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
He did take the building down. I think we had said that we would do the concrete.
Okay. I know I was worried about kids playing on that stuff, but I didn't, I don't think I ever got the reason why.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. All right. I'll take a motion for item E, please.
Mayor, I move to approve item E.
Okay, second. Charlie Tucker. Please vote. Number five is discussion of city ordinance regarding foster animals. For that, Megan Lee. You want to come up here? Is she here? Okay. Okay.
If you want to come up here and state your name and address for us. No, there, on that.
Hi, my name is Megan Lee, and I live at 401 Taylor Street. She's a short, short person, probably.
I don't think it's working.
I don't think it's working.
It's not working? Oh, wait. Have to get closer. Okay. There, now the old place from here. All right. Good evening, Mayor Flippo and council persons. I thank you all for being open to this discussion. As I said, my name is Megan Lee, and I'm actually a lifelong resident of Saginaw. And I pray that the facts and statements presented to you all today will invoke change and allow Saginaw residents to continue to make a positive impact on the welfare of animals. What brought me here today and made this discussion at the forefront of immediate action is the unfortunate circumstance of being reported to Animal Services for having too many dogs at my home, something that I take full accountability for. I didn't do my due diligence in being informed of the city ordinances, and I've been fully compliant with Saginaw Animal Services to the best of my ability and will continue to do so. Unfortunately, our wonderful and growing city has not taken into account those of us who have made a commitment to save the lives of neglected, abused, and otherwise unwanted animals, an issue that has been ongoing in Texas since 2006 and is currently at its peak. Texas is the number one state for animal shelter deaths. In 2021, 61,425 cats and dogs that waited for an owner in shelters were killed, which is a statistic that can be read or seen via AustinReform.org. This issue is so prevalent that even our own animal shelter at Saginaw Animal Services has suffered the effects. In fact, from February 17th to 27th, which is just a week ago, Saginaw Animal Services announced on their Facebook page twice, which I've provided some screenshots, stating that they've closed intake and gone into code red, meaning that the shelter was overflowing with dogs and cats. They would soon have to make the choice to euthanize some of the animals, as they, like all of our local shelters, simply do not have the space or the resources to take proper care of such an overwhelming amount of animals. Saginaw Animal Services, thankfully, were able to remove their code red status both times. Why? Well, based off of their posts on their Facebook page, it looks like many rescues tagged and pooled several of the animals, which is something that they can't do unless they have a committed foster willing to take the animal. Animal rescues are not shelters. Most don't have a place to put an overflow of discarded pets. They rely solely on people like myself and other residents of Saginaw and the DFW MetroPecs who volunteer by opening their hearts and homes to temporarily house dogs and cats, promptly bring them up to date on vaccinations, and have them spayed and neutered to ensure they're unable to add to the overpopulation problem. The fact of the matter is that I could spend all night stating the statistics and going over all the facts that I've previously laid out for you all here. I sent lots of emails. However, I believe that we can all clearly see that this is an overwhelming issue. Rescue pets are not dangerous animals, and they pose no threat to the health and safety of our community. They're innocent animals that deserve the second chance at life, love, and happiness that has been gifted to them by those of us willing and able to tackle the issue. In rescue, we see small victories and face a lot of heartbreak. I just ask that you consider making the changes that I am about to propose, and that tonight, or at least very soon, we can celebrate another small victory in the positive impact that we can accomplish in animal welfare and rescue. All right, these are the changes that I am proposing. Amending or the addition of a multiple pet family permit with a fee, just as the city of Fort Worth has, a fee that is requested not to exceed $150 per year, or is at the discretion of the city. I sent a link, but it's easily found online, what Fort Worth offers and like every detail therein. A high fee would not only like bring in more tax revenue, but it also would discourage those with bad intentions, such as dog fighting, animal hoarding, backyard breeding, et cetera. And then the second would be that the city of Saginaw amends the city ordinance pertaining to pets within a household. Currently, it allows a total of five, but that's limited to two dogs, or three cats, or three dogs and two cats. An amendment would keep the total limit at five, but not have a limit on specific species. So you could have, one resident could have five dogs registered, or five cats, or a mixture, but I understood that a limitation on the size of those animals could be determined by city council. And that's really all that I had for that, and I thank all of you for your time, and I'm available for any questions, and I just really appreciate everyone here listening.
Okay. Well, I'm an animal lover, too, so, okay, but in my opinion, I really think this needs to go to the Animal Services Board and let them work out some, and then bring that to the council so that we can discuss it.
Okay.
I'm sure there might be some council members that have some questions for you or whatever, but I think that it should go there first, because that's what they're there for, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
And then we can keep you informed. I'm sure Gabe will keep you informed on what's happening, and that way you can be present, like if they change the ordinances or whatever.
Okay.
Okay. Council, you got any questions? Mary? Cindy?
I have a couple of recommendations. I agree with you. I think it needs to go to our animal shelter board. They have the professionals on that board. They have the concerned citizens on that board. In fact, they're meeting tonight, so they can't be here. I'd like to see an inspection form. You know, I know for our chicken ordinance, it's just a memory list, and that needs to change as well. I'd like to see a comprehensive application for these people, but mostly I would like to see these animals that are fostered in our city limits come from our shelter, because that's a huge problem that we seem to have.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And one other thing that I'd like to add to this, and I think this would be at the discretion of the animal shelter, is people who have certified service dogs, that we consider waiving their fee for registration. They still need to register and tag their dogs, but I think we need to consider waiving their fee.
I think we should take that to the board also.
Yeah, unless I'm saying all that needs to go to the board, those recommendations. But we need it.
Charlie? I'm sorry. Were you finished? Charlie? Nick?
I'd like to say, I really appreciate you bringing this up, and we definitely have. It's on our work plan this year to tackle this, and
Wonderful.
When Animal Control showed up, you could have taken it extremely negative and got all mad, but instead, you sat down, looked at it, did a tremendous amount of research. I was very impressed with the research, everything you said. I looked through it, I looked through all the different cities. There's kind of any, all the different cities did it a little bit different, but they all had different things, a great bind and all of them. So again, I commend you on taking a step forward, finding a weakness within our policies here in Saginaw and bringing it to the council. And I absolutely agree, we need to have it go before the board and have them work this into the overall plan, so definitely need to make sure you get in contact with them. Gabe, I guess you could reach out. They're meeting today, right? So make sure your ideals get presented to them, and you go there and present it, and that's what we're going to, you know, going to the council. Go down and
Okay. Oh, awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
No, thank you. You did all the work.
Ms. Lee reached out to us last week. I've done a little research myself, looked over your stuff. I've got some recommendations I'd like to submit to the Animal Control Board. Add another category, instead of the three dogs, two cats, or three cats, two dogs, have an option also for four dogs or four cats. Have a permit for fostering up to two animals and a fee involved with it. I don't think we need to do $150 a year, but maybe $50 a year. And put a time limit, either 60 or 90 days for the fostering. Then hopefully they'll get adopted out and bring some more in.
The only question I have is, what if it's a mom with puppies you can't say two? You'd have to make some kind of reference for the puppy's litter.
Well, the puppies, there is, it already is addressed, there's no limit.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's what our committee's forced to get down.
I understand. That's what they should do, is bring us something and bring it to the council, and then we'll make sure and keep you informed, okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And we also have, oh, excuse me.
And if, in fact, it ends up that foster, foster families only foster animals from our animal shelter, we will be helping that animal shelter. So it doesn't seem appropriate to charge that family for helping our animal shelter. So that, that should be talked about at least.
I think mainly the fee, like she said, was so that it was just for fostering and not for, you know what I mean? Because there's some bad people out there. I'm not saying, but there are some bad people out there.
Yeah, I just think it would help our animal shelter to have people foster animals that will decrease the population, so it doesn't seem like we should charge them.
I will agree with that as well. Thank you so much.
Okay. And we also have somebody, Kelly Stewart?
I got an answer.
You got an answer? We're good? Okay. That'll work. Okay, so we'll make sure that gets done through the animal board. Number six is city ordinance review discussion, off-street parking, and for that we have Larry Little and Doug Spears. Who's going to tackle that one?
Chief Building Official Little. I'm going to be his support mechanism.
Mayor, pro temp, council, thank you for your time. You've asked the staff review ordinances, so this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
We took in on the off-street parking, obviously.
All right.
So what I'm going to, first of all, talk about a little bit of this off-street parking. I know this is a, kind of gets controversial sometimes on approved surfaces, pavements. I think we have a good business owner here tonight that's got, probably may say something to do with this, but looking over this and being collaborative with five different, I know I've got with Chief Spears, I've talked with Matt Ironby, Randy Newsom, and this is what we've come up with. You, I think you all have a copy of the ordinance itself, so that ordinance is very lengthy. I don't want to go through the entire ordinance, but I do want to go through the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Good, that's what I was going to ask for, is to hit the changes.
Just keep it streamlined, so that we can take it one man.
Where are we pointing at? You got, there you go.
So to start off, is the, the way it's written is on-premise parking required. All required commercial and residential parking spaces shall be located on the premises. What we're scratching out is to which such requirement applies, or within off-street space, or within the distance of not more than 300 feet from such premises. The reason for this is, I've got, I'll show you a picture later, some of these to back this up, but with all the development coming, the problem is, is you see that most people take advantage of the minimum amount of parking that they, they get. That's what they do. Developments come in, and they want to get, allow, they basically want to give you the minimum amount. What we don't want to end up with is parking on the streets. It's already been a problem. I know you're aware of on Hialeah. Thank you, Police Department has finally gotten that one under control, but this is what we're trying to prevent. So that is clearly what the indication of that is. The next one will be residential park development standards. The following regulations shall apply to all residentially zoned districts and apply to any required front, rear, or side yard being used to park or store vehicles, including boats and trailers. All new improvements on any rear or side yard must meet the requirements of section 9.3 drainage. That section is what a lot of people don't understand that's in there. That's a whole nother ordinance, but it does affect your side yards and for drainage, and that's the purpose. I want to at least draw their attention to that. All vehicles which are parked or stored on private property in residential areas are to be on an approved surface. I know, Nikki, you were talking about before when we met, you wanted things clear and precise, and that's kind of what we're trying to do, is to make it where anybody can read this and see exactly what the intent is. What we did add to that, or basically what we took away from that is monolithic concrete paved surfaces or surfaces of contiguous concrete pavers normally used in paving construction and two inches or more in thickness. Pavers are not to exceed one-half inch above the surface of the yard in which they are placed to allow them to be properly mowed and trimmed around. We are doing away with pavers. That is the intent of this, is to do away with pavers.
But you say one-and-a-half-inch pavers.
The intent, well, yeah, there's a missed eye. The intent is to do away with pavers completely. No more pavers.
That's a staff recommendation.
State, yes, that's the recommendation, is to do away with the pavers.
So are you replacing all this?
The next is the off-street park required for residential uses mentioned in these regulations shall be paved according to any of the following standards. You've got four inches of reinforced Portland cement concrete over compacted subgrade, or not less than two inches of hot mixed asphalt over at least six inches of approved subgrade material. That is your choices for residential parking. The pavers, and I will take you through the slides later, I will show you, the 21 years I've been here, 15 or 16 years of those, we have fought pavers. They were in there, someone put them in there for a reason. They are a problem, and I will show you the pictures to back it up, that this has been a problem all along. The environmental department talking to them, it's an issue with them. When you get things that wash into the street, it gets into our storm sewers, it is an issue. Besides the look, and again, I'll take you some pictures to show you what we're talking about, but that is the intent of that, is to get either concrete or asphalt on there. Now, if later on someone could bring in approved material, we certainly could look at it. I've done studies on some easy paid, me and you talked before about easy paid, true grid, there are some, there are some products out there. The problem is, is the cost. When you're talking about cost, you're talking about up to $11 a square foot for true grid, and that's not including the base and the price of putting it down compared to concrete.
So what's concrete going per square foot right now to install that?
So concrete, I don't want to square foot, but a yard's probably about 100 and, I think the last I checked was 175 a yard.
That's just for the concrete, that's not to have it poured.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct.
I believe in looking at this particular recommendation, you looked at some other cities, too, to see
I've talked to 10 other cities. There are some other cities that are still doing pavers. They make you put them, they do a concrete encasement, so the paver's going there, but again, if you talk to code enforcement officers, the ones that have to deal with this, that's the problem. That's the time we're spending. You're asking us to save staff time, save, you know, we want to educate, and I can tell you, it's worked. Like I said, again, out of all the years I've been here, I would have told you 10 years ago, we probably had 50 or 60 properties that had pavers. We're down to a dozen. We're down to a dozen that have pavers that we constantly have to give those, not a citation, but the note of violation, to make sure that they're kept up.
So what's the citations? I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out. I'm struggling here, they're not mowing around them, or
Absolutely.
But then they're probably not mowing the rest of the yard.
Well, that's sometimes the case, too, you know? But you're talking about a very few compared to, I mean, when you look at an overall city, the majority has a solid surface. They've got a surface, approved surface, and that's the issue. So if we're trying to save staff time, it's not just the time, it's the looks. I mean, when you see these pictures, and man, I'll ask you, and there's other people in here, what do you want next to your property? I think we're stewards of our property. We're not only that, but we should be concerned about other people's property, too. It's the whole look of the neighborhood, and I think that's what's gotten away, but we can, we can address that in a minute.
Would it be fair to say, Larry, the pavers, people don't prepare their yard for the pavers as intended?
Oh, absolutely.
And then they don't, they don't maintain them after the fact. They're just simply put over the grass or whatever the surface is, they become unlevel, they don't maintain them.
Yeah, definitely. And it's, but it's like, that could go with anything. It's preparation, and that's not what's done. You go to Home Depot, you pick up the pavers, you talk to the people at Home Depot, oh, you lay these right on the ground, and that's exactly what they do.
Does the city, excuse me, does the city provide any guidelines for these pavers?
We do when they come and ask.
When they come and ask.
Yeah, and I will show you a picture in a minute where that just happened this recently. This is about the last two weeks.
And if you find a violation, do you also give them, provide that information to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Try to educate them, and I think honestly, that's what's happened. I'll give a shout out to code enforcement. For the last 10 years, Jeremy has educated people on this, and, you know, he doesn't want to write citations. You talk to people, you tell them, and now that we've, now that you've seen the difference, we've got concrete out there, we've got asphalt out there, you know? So I think it's made a big difference in the community. The others, vehicles are to be completely The others, uh, vehicles are to be completely resting on such approved surfaces from the point they leave the public streets to the point upon which they are parked or stored. That's been in there, that's not changed, we just wanted to make sure the word approved was in there, not just surface. The others, all vehicles which are parked or stored in a required rear yard shall be placed behind a screening partition of fencing materials or dense vegetation so as to obscure the vehicle from view from a public street. Here's the problem with dense vegetation.
Johnson grabs.
I don't want to know what's in your backyard. Put a fence up, we don't, we're not, we're not looking to write things up. But when you use trees or brush to cover it, when it's dead in the winter, guess who sees it? Your neighbor that doesn't like the looks of that automobile in the back or the boat that's in the back. That's the problem. Put it behind a screening fence. Problem solved.
Okay, so if I have an enclosed trailer, that enclosed trailer, I have to have a fence big enough to cover that whole enclosed trailer?
Nope, it's not what it says, it just obscured. You're, you couldn't, your fence, yeah, yeah. The idea is to obscure it, you're not going to get rid of it one hundred percent, we know that. But if you're parked on an approved surface back there, it's behind your fence, I, I don't, I don't care what, you're fine. We don't want to know your business, we're, we're not in the business to know your business all the time, that's the problem. But the fenced vegetation has created this problem for a long time, and I know people use that all the time, it just doesn't work. So that's our recommendation, is to take dense vegetation portion out of that, and just put it behind a screening fence.
Right, so in other words, the standard issue fence that we've all got
Yep.
around our backyards, as long as it's behind at that spot?
We got them all over the place.
Six-foot fence?
Six-foot fence.
Okay.
Yep.
We good?
Yep. So all vehicles shall be parked in relationship to the street and dwelling at right angles and not to extend over any walkway to be closer than eight inches from the back of the curb, will not obstruct the pedestrian ways. Notwithstanding the foregoing, vehicles parked on residential lots maintain a primary vehicle entry and the side yard of the lot of no greater than ten feet may impede the pedestrian walkway if the vehicle will not fit entirely within the vehicle entryway. This is for yards with side entries. The idea is that it's a violation to block the sidewalk, but we have a lot of houses, especially out in Dominion, that have side entry garages. If it sides on a corner street, that driveway is, there's a shorter distance between the, the prop, the, the curb and the, the house itself. So a truck that I drive, you drive, is going to block that sidewalk.
Right.
The idea is to give some kind of leniency to that, and that's what that, that's what that entails. We're not changing that, there's no reason to change that.
Yeah, that's currently how the code reads.
That's, that's correct. The next one would be, it used to say any vehicle. My, my thing about, the reason why we add inoperable, everybody has a vehicle, including this one sitting in my personal driveway right now that I have that I fixed up, uh, it's operable though. The only vehicles we don't want to see out in the public is the operables. If you've got a motor pulled out of one, there's nothing against working on a car, having a car to work on, everybody has projects. But if the vehicle's actually missing a motor, wheels, tires missing, this is, this is changing to where it says inoperable. In other words, that vehicle's inoperable, get it out of sight. That's, that's what the ordinance says, that's currently the way it reads, we just wanted to make sure it said inoperable, because a lot of people were thinking that's just any vehicle sitting there. No, if it's inoperable, we want it moved into an enclosed area or outside.
If it's inoperable while they're working on it, they can't work on it like if it's in the driveway? Say they're putting an engine in it and they cover it or whatever while they're working on it, is that okay or no?
So, we have this lot, there's a lot of them around here. If they're not doing it commercially, I don't have a problem, because most of the time, as long as they're keeping the airs, the, the tires aired up, it's not on jack stands, it's actually not in disraced, sitting there with parts laying everywhere, we've got them all over town. I don't have a problem with that.
So the way this is read, it says it has to be moved into an enclosed building, so if they have it in their garage, they're fine.
You're, you're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And most people who would be restoring, say, um,
Would want it in the garage?
Most standard or something would have it in the garage, they wouldn't have it out there.
So non-residential parking standards, the off-street parking loading facilities required for non-residential uses mentioned in these regulations shall be paved according to the following. Four inches of reinforced Portland cement concrete over compacted subgrade in all districts, not less than two inches of hot asphalt, hot mixed asphalt over at least six inches of lime-treated subgrade or other approved material in all districts.
I have a question. Aren't there some places that we can just have asphalt and some not?
Asphalt is approved.
All through the city?
Yeah, the only thing is when you get into fire lanes, that's the misconception, you're not putting, you're not doing a fire lane in asphalt.
That's what I'm saying.
It won't hold up.
So for a driveway, what's the, is it four inches, is that, is that?
So, tip, yes, standard would be four inches.
Okay.
You know they put a two by four down, it's three and a half inches, it's not four, so.
Okay.
But yes, four inches, four inches minimum, yes.
Okay. What I didn't want to do is just put that in there and then they start driving over it and cracking.
Yeah, no, it's got to be four inches reinforced, it makes our, we have standards for that also in our, it'd be our ordinance book, not the zoning, but our ordinance, subdivision ordinance, there are standards there that they can look, that they can get online, that tell them.
Yes. You guys were just following the international standard?
Yeah, but that, and that's part of the permit process anyway. That's part of them going through the permit process. The one change that we did is not less than two inches of hot mixed asphalt over six inches of crushed stone, flexible base, subgrade, or other approved material in heavy industrial areas and light industrial. Obviously, in, four inches of concrete is not going to work with heavy machinery. This gives us the option, you know, when they do their soils test, they do, they do provide those, this will tell them what they need to be developing their roads out of. That's given us alternative means and approved, other approved materials so that we can approve. You don't want a whole field out there in concrete, that's not the intent. If there's an approved material out there that will hold up to this, then that's what we want to be able to do, given to the reports, based on the reports we're given. Basically, the right, remainder of that remains unchanged, we didn't do any changes to D or seven.
Okay. Can we go back to C?
Yeah.
Because it says, uh, flexible base, subgrade, or other approved material. Who's going to approve the material?
We do. This is part of the permit process.
If the guy goes to Home Depot or Lowe's and they sell him a bunch of stuff, yeah, it's approved.
Yeah. But in light industrial and heavy industrial, keep in mind, most of those are permitted, they go through public works, those are not just your homeowners, those are your heavy, heavy construction.
The only two.
And that goes through plan review and.
You go all the way back to the beginning, the only two approved veh, the only two approved materials is concrete and asphalt.
For, well, except for light industrial, heavy industrial.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Okay, but for commercial, for, not, for residential, for, that's.
Residential, commercial is typically asphalt or, you won't see anything but asphalt and concrete and generally commercial.
Yeah.
But light industrials were your difference. You get into the gravel, you get into the road bases, and there's, and there's, there's, uh, there's reasons for that.
Would it benefit, um, the city if we were to put, because I was wondering about the same thing about approved? A lot of our ordinances have a glossary, you know, approved residential means asphalt and cement reinforced.
One in the call, call for.
There you.
And, and, you know, just, just something, just to add that little extra clarification because, you know, I think that could protect you as well as.
Right, so I was discussing this with the chief. Our office hasn't reviewed this yet, we're just trying to gather feedback on the concept right now.
Yeah.
But absolutely, that, any, any of those terms that are undefined will need to be defined, because this is a criminal ordinance and you can't have any vagueness, otherwise it won't be enforceable. But we'll, we'll definitely address that, and if, if you all have any feedback for Larry in terms of the, the concept, that's the important part.
So when I talked about off-street parking earlier and the problems that we're worried, that do, that have existed in the past and existed, this is not a shot to Saginaw, this is a shot to Fort Worth. I will tell you, this is, you know the subdivisions that are coming in, all the multifamily? This is not what we want. We want to make sure that their parking is on premises. We don't want them parked out in our streets, we don't want them to impede the flow of emergency, you know, operations. That's kind of what we're looking at on this, that's the intent of this, is to make sure they, they've got to provide their parking. We don't want them in the streets. So this is your, one of your driveways with gravel and grass right now that currently exist, and you can imagine, the street guys love this, they're, they're cleaning the streets constantly. This is what happens. You pull the gravel and dirt out in the street. So this is the brand-new one, this just happened in the last two weeks, I know these folks are good folks, I wish they'd have called me. Uh, you can see that the pavers go, they use the pavers, they're pretty right now, but they go to our curb, that curb is not designed to roll over like that. You're spending your taxpayers' dollar, Randy, I know Randy is, he's sending folks around all the time fixing sidewalks and curbs, this is not what we want. The proper thing to do, we'd put approach in, we'd have put a driver approach in, some concrete or asphalt, and this would have solved that problem.
Are those commercial trucks right there?
They are commercial trucks. Here's a perfect example, this one's been in our books for a long time, and it's a, it's a regular, it's one of our regulars, uh, and that's a, that's a good picture of it. But this is pavers, these folks put it out, they needed a place to obviously store their boat, but this is, this is what we're seeing. This is, this is those lovely notices that they get on a regular basis. Mow your grass, take care of the weeds, and the other problem is, how do you kill that grass? You know how you kill it, you, you weed killer and you spray it. That's exactly what, you know, to maintain it. Here's another one, this is another one of our regulars, this, and this, that's a good picture of it, I was proud of that picture. I think that's the best it's looked in a while. This is another good example of pavers that don't work over time.
So how long have them pavers been there though?
You know, Nikki, on this particular one right here, I'm going to.
Thirty years?
Oh, no. No. No, probably ten years, maybe, on some of them? Some of them are, some of them are fairly new, because they attempted to fix the one up above, I think Jeremy wrote them up last year again. But, uh, we can go to the next one. Okay. So if you're not familiar with this one, this is a perfect example of what you don't want, and I will tell you, the neighbors are not happy about this. They live in a, if you look at the houses down this street, they're all kept very nice. And this is what we have, is what our homes, nothing against them, I wished I had one, but that's not the place for it, and that's not the, that is not what you want to park that on. You can actually see right there at the corner of the curb right there, where, I know we can talk about that they can make it off that with jumping the curb, they cannot, because that dirt right there is tore up, because they just recently sold that vehicle or moved it, not sure which one, but you can see where it tore the dirt up getting off of it. You can't turn that vehicle, those pavers do not work. And the next picture is what we're left with. This is, the, it's gone now, and this is what the, this is what the community's looking at. I don't think this is intent, and I, 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 I can't imagine anybody wanting this in their front yard, to be honest with you. It doesn't help them out, certainly for values of the home, it doesn't help, I wouldn't want it in front of mine. So you say, how do we solve this problem? Well, I can, I honestly can say that you guys have already kind of helped us solve that problem. Recently, you, you passed a program called the SHIP program, and I think this is going to be a good start for it, because for some of these folks that need that extra help, I think this is going to be, I think it's going to be perfect. This is actually a picture of a guy that was pavers, and this is what it looks like now, and his neighbors are thrilled to death. He went from pavers to that. He's got a driver approach, he can get the three cars in his driveway now, and they're happy, they're not calling us anymore. So again, I think this new program is going to help with this, I, I, I think once it gets kick-started, it's going to help. And I, and I thank you for doing that, I know Keith's working on it, Pedro's working on it. I think, I know Gabe, all of us are trying to get that program started. So I think it'll be a good opportunity to, to help out. And that's kind of all I've got on that, that's just a proposal, obviously it's got to go to Bren's office for review, but if this is something that, you know, we want to do, I, I certainly think, I think this is the way to handle, I think this is the best idea.
I, I think it's good, I mean, it's a good start, I definitely need to read on it more, but this is exactly, this is exactly, at least myself, I had in mind, you know, tackling these ordinances one at a time, uh, you know, it's, it's not fun.
No.
Uh, and it'll, it'll definitely help the citizens out.
That's what, that's what we're all for, all, all of us.
Yeah.
Got any other questions?
Good, Mary. I just wanted to thank you all for all your hard work, this improves that and makes it more easily understood and cleans that up and hopefully improve our, you know, the look of our city. Is that SHIP program still just for that one particular neighborhood at this time?
So it is targeted, and that's something we're going to probably discuss here pretty soon, because I just got an application in day for a whole different area. It just came in a while ago before I came up here, so I think we may need to.
Yeah, I, I would like for it to be available to the whole city, because, you know, we, we targeted that older section, which is a lower-income area usually, and they might not have the funds to even start the process of trying to do that, and so I think, you know, overall, the whole city could, could benefit from that.
That's a good point.
Could I get what you just showed marked up?
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
I was going to ask that, and when you show, I asked what I needed. I'm lazy, that way I can say exactly what was modified and stuff.
I think to keep it moving forward, what we'll do is we'll get this to you, give you a period of time and ask for any comments before we engage legal to dial in and define that, to make sure we're all on the same page, we just didn't want to get in front of you and go to legal without input from you.
Now, this had, this has to go before a public hearing too, with that change.
Oh, yeah.
We're not, we don't make anything tonight, this is just a decision.
Yeah, right, good, no, it's good overview, appreciate it.
Just a review, thank you, appreciate you.
We'll get the information to you, then we'll reach out for feedback, and then that's.
Hey, when do we get to next one?
Let me recoup, no, no, it, it's coming soon, I will promise you that, we're going to continue. I want to get it done as bad as you do, believe me.
The plan is to bring at least one every council meeting, get two of them that are really quick, we're going to knock out the first ten, again, with the criteria that they most often deal with, that's the plan, and then from there, we'll see where we go.
And I'd like to get out to all the citizens, if they got a question, call and ask.
Absolutely. We're all in this together.
Takes two seconds. Pick up a phone and call somebody. Get the right phone numbers, get it.
Speaking of, thank you, Mary, for, we chased that wrong phone number for a year, and I will say, thank you, Mary, because we finally, between the two of us, we figured it out.
I'm Cindy.
She's Cindy. She says she's Cindy.
Oh, I'm, sorry, my mind is everywhere. Yes, Cindy, Mary, I apologize, Cindy, I apologize. But Cindy, thank you very much.[1621.03] I'm keeping you on your toes. That's all I care about.
Yeah, I'm awake.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this was great. I really appreciate you doing this. I did have one question about blocking the sidewalk. I did have one, and I talked to you about him briefly. This one guy had a problem with his boat parked on the curb by his neighbor's house, and then he moved it under his carport, and the tongue of his boat hung out like six inches into the sidewalk, and he got written up for that. So then he moved it on the side of the yard, and he got written up for that. But when you're talking about blocking the walkway, is that extending over any part of that walkway, or is it blocking fully?
That's actually what it says, just extending over any of the parkway.
Okay, good. When we said blocking, I mean, that's kind of vague, too, so that may be one other thing we want to clear up. So...
Yeah. And generally, code enforcement will tell them to slide it sideways a little bit. It only takes a little bit of turning that tongue sideways, and it's off.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for myself. Thank you. I do appreciate what you did. This is probably the biggest complaint that I've heard from most of the citizens, is this particular issue. So you guys picked a great one to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Number seven is the Fire Department Salary Staffing Budget and General Overview Discussion, and for that, we have our Fire Chief, Doug Spears.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. As requested, the Fire Department has prepared a overview for the Fire Department to include salaries, budget, services, and staffing. I will start out just briefly covering the budget. All the information we're going to cover tonight was positioned at each of your stations there, but I will start out covering the budget. Some members of our, presenting our local firefighter association will come up and cover the services, staffing, and kind of the salary portion, and when they come up, I'll let them introduce themselves. But again, I'll start with the budget. You have a single piece of paper there that kind of outlines the budget. I'll try to cover it pretty brief. It's straightforward. Any questions you have after this presentation, please reach out to us, and we will address them in greatest detail. So our Fire Department budget for this particular year, $4,156,000. That's without the capital expenditures that y'all approve every year for capital expenditures, obviously, equipment, the bigger purchases that we do. Ninety-one point nine percent of that is spent for, or expended for Fire Department salaries. When I say salaries, that's the benefits, retirement, Uncle Sam's portion, Social Security, Medicare, all that. So ninety-one point nine, ninety-one point one percent, ninety-one point one percent of the budget goes to cover those salaries. What remains is eight point nine percent, or $370,000, of which 271,500 are fixed, or what we consider non-discretionary cost to run the Fire Department. I won't go into detail, but I've listed out most of those, and again, I can provide that in detail should you need it. What remains is 2.3% of the budget, roughly a little short of $100,000 that we actually use to run the Fire Department to cover all the things listed there underneath there. Reminding you that we have 29 personnel in two fire stations operating 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. That covers uniforms, office supplies, everything we use on a daily basis to make the Fire Department run. So there is not a lot of discretionary spending or funds that we have that are not directly related to our operation. And I will say, over the last year, on average, it's 10%. It's probably greater without putting a pencil to it. Every service, commodity, contract the Fire Department has, has went up at least that 10% without us coming back and requesting a lot of budget increases for that. We absorb it until we can't absorb it anymore, and that's when we bring a coin increase. Any questions over the budget? With that, I will let the staff members come up, representing our local firefighter association, and I'll introduce themselves.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity. Let's introduce ourselves first. This is Battalion Chief John Tadlock, Lieutenant Austin Pittman, I'm Lieutenant Dean Baumann. We're here representing Saginaw Professional Firefighter Association, and we're going to let you know a little bit about what we do here, how we operate, and some of the needs to keep your Fire Department the way you have it now, a great Fire Department. So first of all, I do want to acknowledge our Fire Administration, the City Council, past and present, the City Administration, because we do have great equipment, right? We have, thankfully, we have good facilities. We're working on that. So I just wanted to start off with that. So the big thing with our Fire Department is the culture. We have a great culture at our Fire Department. What does culture mean? It means we come to work, we enjoy coming to work. People don't sit at the table and complain about not coming to work. We help each other, we support each other, okay? So with that, our, we have a lot, we have good retention at our Fire Department. We could do better. We've lost some good people over the years. But as of right now, we have an average of about 12 years with the City of Saginaw service time, okay? An average of 15 years overall experience between all of our personnel. So we're doing good right there, but over the next 10 years, we're going to talk about, we could really be in a tough spot if we don't do some improvement. So what we do, we educate ourselves. We're one of the most educated Fire Departments per capita in DFW Metroplex, and we do have, all of you have some paperwork there you can look at to show tenure, some of the things that we, the education that we have, the education we provide for ourselves, and the education that the Fire Department provides to us. A lot of these things we pay for ourselves. We take time out of our own lives to do these things. We use our own money. The Fire Department's fortunate, or we're fortunate that the Administration gives us the time off occasionally when available to do some of these classes, because that directly supports the Fire Department and the city for those. So why do we educate ourselves like that? So we have some pretty big target hazards here in Saginaw. I'm sure you're probably aware, on the other side of the railroad tracks, target hazards, some of them are obvious, right? We have some target hazards that have, you know, specifically chlorine, you know, vast amounts of chlorine. Obviously, the train tracks, we all know that. You know, there are other ammonia hazards. There are manufacturing facilities, a lot of things over there that are potentially very hazardous, not only to us, but the city, if we don't mitigate these issues quickly. And not to mention the monetary impact from the city if one of these facilities is to stop manufacturing, right? So that's why we educate ourselves, and, you know, we have a lot of things here, we have to do a lot of things here that are typically reserved for big cities. And when I say that, I'm talking things like high angle rescues, chemical spills, train accidents, derailments, heavy vehicle rescues. These are things that we do. These aren't what-ifs. These are things that we actually, we actually do. We've all done those things here, and recently. You know, this isn't, this isn't something that we're saying maybe it'll happen. These are things that have happened, and we've all dealt with.
Look real quick, Dean. I've seen a lot of y'all really looking hard at some paper, and I think it's what this slide is.
Yeah, there's a large... My reading glasses don't even work that well. They do.
Bring your binoculars next time, Charlie.
Right. Right. So looking through here, a lot of these certifications that we take, these aren't just, you know, weekend class. These are 40, 60-hour classes, some of them much more than that, that culminate in a state test. I don't know how many of you have taken a state test, but they're quite intensive. So we have, on average, it says, you know, 9.1 certifications per firefighter, okay? It only takes one certification to be a firefighter. In a lot of cities, that's what you get, but with the City of Saginaw, as you can see, you have quite a bit of extra knowledge. And specifically, we couldn't really do this comparison with other cities, because some of these we can't find online, because we would have to, you know, query each individual person for a different city, right? But, you know, and these are things like all the rescue technician level classes, you know, rope rescue, confined space rescue, vehicle, heavy vehicle tech, swift water, trench, all these things, which we have people that are certified in all these different disciplines. So to get there, I also want to, I'm going to let Austin speak about this, but I also want to say our firefighters are 100% paramedics, from the Fire Chief all the way down to the newest firefighter. And we can't really find another city in the Metroplex that can say that. So I'm going to let Austin speak on that a little bit.
Mayor Protem, Council, thanks again for having us. I'm the EMS coordinator for the Saginaw Fire Department as well. So this is kind of my wheelhouse. I'm going to kind of, there's another chart that's not with y'all, but I'm going to go into that. It's very similar to the certifications of the firefighters, but our other role is in emergency medical services, and I would say anywhere from 80 to 85% of our total call volume deals with emergency medicine, medical calls, chest pain, you know, trauma, things like that. So that's a whole nother side of what we do. Again, being 100% paramedics, that's very important to the public, to our citizens. We are able to provide a high level of care that is not delayed, waiting on an ambulance with advanced care and other paramedics. We're able to do, on a majority of the time, everything that an ambulance can do. We literally, they pull up, and we hand the patient off to the ambulance service, and everything's done for them. We are very well respected by MetStar on that standpoint. And so, you know, that's just another highlight there. For paramedics, they're kind of on a decline, and we're going to kind of go into the salary portions of that. But paramedics are being paid more in the private sector, ambulance services, hospitals. For example, there's some hospitals paying $40 an hour, and on some shifts, 12-hour shifts, getting 500 to $1,000 shift differential, just a bonus. So that's very enticing. So when we are testing and needing more employees, we're having a hard time finding paramedics. So again, that coincides. That's a major part of our job.
As I say, for these paramedics and what you guys are providing, things like heart attacks, where you guys have already got it, and you can hand off smoke, that minutes can actually, big time, translate into life.
We can actually transmit these 12-lead EKGs, we can transmit these things to the hospital from the scene before the ambulance.
In most of the time, go ahead.
Something I want to touch on that Austin was talking about, and it'll come into play later on, we start talking about salaries, and it's finding quality individuals to come to work. The state of Texas right now has got a grant program going on for cities. If they're paying for EMS classes for people to go to paramedic school, and the reason they're doing that is after COVID, everybody left. All these EMS workers left. In 2022, the reason they started this was, all these people in the state of Texas that hold an EMT or an EMT intermediate, which is kind of in between an EMT and a paramedic, everybody that holds all these certifications, that whole group of people, 7% of them wrote a patient chart in 2022. That's how many people left the EMS world. That's a, I mean, that's a real deal number. That's what caused the state to step up, and they put forth millions of dollars to grant to people, to cities, to send people to school, and that comes into play a little while when we start talking about salaries. It is super difficult to entice people to come to work. First off, the pool of paramedics is so small now, and then the money is, that'll come to play in a little bit.
No, 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 that's great. I think you summarized what I was trying to say. There's another chart similar to the certifications that you saw that y'all were squinting at earlier, but that, there's not a hard copy of it in your packet, I don't believe, but it's on the slide right now. A little easier to read, but this goes, again, the other education that we do with our, for EMS, you know, we are taking card classes every couple of years to be more proficient in the new clinical guidelines for CPR, advanced cardiac life support, and pediatric life support. And we also are doing CE's weekly. We have 144 hours we have to maintain every four years, so that's not even included in that slide. The average paramedic experience for our department is 16 years, and that number is actually off, and I don't know the exact figure, but that is only data I could pull from the Texas Department of State Health Services. Chief Tadlock, he made note, he's like, I've been a paramedic since...
1996.
And it just shows 1999, and I imagine the database, you know, was not on the internet at that point in time. And so, no, no, I didn't say you're old. But I'm just, you know, as electronic records have, you know, been evolved, some data didn't get transposed accurately. So, and that doesn't include our basic experience. You got to become an EMT basic and then become a paramedic. So in my case, I was an EMT basic for five years, and it only shows that I've been a medic since 2006. Actually, it was 2001 is a more accurate figure. Also, a lot of our personnel have either come from an ambulance service and went into the fire service, or currently work at a hospital in an emergency department, or work for another ambulance service. I'm actually, just got off about at 4:00 from a local fire department around here that runs an ambulance, so, and I'll go back here in a little bit. So our job doesn't ever stop, and that's more experience for the citizens as well. Let's see. We're kind of jumping around just a little bit based on our slideshow here. So I think we're going to go into the staffing portion. On the staffing? Go ahead, go into that?
Yeah.
Okay. So next up is staffing. You know, Chief Spears has, over the last three years, asked for a ninth firefighter for a shift. We have A, B, and C shifts. Currently, two of our shifts do have the nine full-staffed firefighters, and we're, B shift is currently only having eight. So they're missing that one firefighter. The National Fire Protection Administration sets standards for a lot of what we wear, our gear, to the vehicles, you name it. It's in a big, large book, and it also goes over staffing for structured fires. That is typically an engine carrying four personnel, a truck, a ladder truck, four personnel. On a typical house fire, it's 15 firefighters at a minimum. Two-out, two-in, two-out rule, that means if we only have three persons on a fire truck, and there's a fire, we cannot effectively go into a house fire. Now, if there's a rescue, we're going to risk a lot to save a lot, but that's putting us in danger. If something goes wrong, we got one person outside to help us. So that's...
I'll touch on that a little bit. I actually, I'm the, I'm the one that runs the truck that's short, and I'll speak on that. So really, since 2014, we've been needing this firefighter. We've been asking for the additional firefighter, okay? So we've only got 2/3 of the way there in nearly 10 years, and our needs have kept going beyond that, and we're still trying to ask for that. We have, you know, administration staffing needs that really haven't been, they haven't even been asked for, that are needed just because of this position. So I run three on my shift. I'm the short shift, and I'll tell you exactly how that impacts us. So within the last three weeks, I believe it's three weeks, my crew has been first in on two working structure fires, first crew on scene, and that's within the last three weeks. So what does that mean? Well, what that means is, my job is the 10,000-foot view, okay, when a first company officer on scene. My driver is working on pulling lines and pumping the truck, okay? So that leaves me one firefighter. So the first one we did was an attic fire. It was a really rolling attic fire. My firefighter and I went upstairs, and I had the hook, and my firefighter had the hose line. So my job typically as a company officer would be go to locate the fire, find out where it's going, find out what resources we need, and direct my crew as to where they need to go. But I wasn't doing that. I was pulling ceiling, because I didn't have that additional firefighter. Now, we got the job done, because that's what we do, okay? But that's one example of some of the issues that we've had. Now, just last weekend, we had a fire. We were first on, my crew, garage fire extended into the second floor. The second floor was on fire, including the garage. So we had to put out, we had to stop the garage, so we put the fire out in the garage, but our second-end companies were quite a ways away. So we weren't able to go upstairs with a second line to attack the upstairs fire until we had another company on scene, because of the two-in, two-out rule Lieutenant Pittman was telling you about. We got it done, like we always do, but it's more, it's more dangerous for us, and it's possible loss, actually not possible, there's more loss at the property for the citizens, because we're not working efficiently, okay? So what we're asking for is the additional firefighter, but that's kind of where everybody was 10 to 15 years ago. So where cities are moving now are four-person minimum staffing, right? So what does that mean? That means that there's four people on the fire engine or fire truck all the time. Where we're at now, when somebody takes off, which is about 75% of the time, that person's not replaced on the truck, so we're still running with three. Does that make sense? So...
Not just on our shift.
On all shifts, all shifts. So...
So what do you do, you're already at three, what do you do when somebody gets sick?
We swing someone from another fire station, and we run...
And then we run three, so now you have two fire trucks in the city with three personnel.
Correct. And then if someone gets sick, then that's where mandatory overtime comes in. So, because there always has to be at least three, and we would like, at some point in the future, to get to four. We know that's, you know, down the road, but really, we're looking for a plan. So now that we kind of understand where we are there, I think everybody kind of understands the importance of that. I think we can move in. Austin, if you want to go back to the salary issue there for them. Now, we can move into the salaries. to go back to the salary issue there for them. Now we can move into the salaries. So this is where we've, this is where we've lost some good people. Over the next two to five years, the majority of our fire department will be eligible for retirement, okay? So the middle of the road group that was going to be probably our next leadership, they left. They've gone to other departments and they took good people with them over staffing, or I'm sorry, salary issues. But we do have a really good group of people here still. We're not out of the wood, or we, we're not in the woods, I guess, completely, but we're still not out of the woods, is what I mean. So there's still good potential here to keep who we have and in 10 years have a really good fire department still when a lot of us leave. Now, there's also a potential that in 10 years, if we don't fix some of the things that we're doing, that we're, we're not going to be anywhere near where we are now. And it's going to be pretty tough to recover. So if you look at, I think you have some of the numbers here, and I'm, I'm sorry, this was done kind of in haste. I didn't, I didn't really anticipate this being put on the slide, but, but the numbers are correct, except for the assistant chief part. I, I didn't, I didn't put those numbers on there correctly. But you can see how far we are behind. And this isn't just starting pay for firefighter. This is starting pay for all positions in the whole fire department. We've, of course, I know you guys understand all about compression, but when we raise that starting salary and we don't do, do anything to any of the other salaries, well, that entices people to come, but we're really not doing anything in regard to competing. We're not, we're not competing. You know, it, it looks like we're competing on our flyer, but then when you get, you get into the weeds here, we're not competing at all with these places. So, you know, the big thing with, with these salaries really is retention. And I'm telling you, I'm not going anywhere. I've, I've been here for 18 years. I'm not leaving. I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this for, for those guys. Some of the guys that are, that have been here for five years or 10 years, that, that are going to be here, that are going to be my replacement and his replacement. Those are the people that, that need this. We, we need to keep those people. So with that said, you have the information here. Of course, the plan is, is not my department. But I will say something about the step program, step plans. On our step plan, there's a big overlap in positions. You might have a firefighter, you can see right here where, let's just go with the AOPA, is our, our apparatus operator starts out base at 64, where it shows our firefighter with top out, or is this right here? It's 67. Is that right? Yeah. So.
73.
What am I doing? Oh, right, right, yeah, sorry. 70, can't read my own stuff. So 73. So we're, we're quite a bit below, right? So the, what I'm getting at here is we need separation in steps. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, if the firefighter has, you know, five steps, or six steps, or even eight steps, that doesn't mean that the apparatus operator has to have eight steps and the lieutenant has to have eight steps. You could, a lot of cities compress those. So you may have, you know, nine, you know, eight or nine steps for firefighter, but then on apparatus operator, you may have, you know, seven. And then for lieutenant, you may have five. And so they compress as, you know, as you promote. And that helps to keep those figures right from running away. But it also helps to keep separation between those positions. So if that makes sense.
In this line of work, step plans are very important. I think we have some flyers that we'll throw up there in a minute. You can see what other cities are doing. When people start looking for a job, there's no shortage of firefighter, paramedic jobs right now. None. Every one of us sitting in this room can walk out the door right now and go right down the road and make 20 to $40,000 a year or more right now, immediately. So when you're trying to entice people to come here and you, you come across good applicants and you want to put up a flyer like this or show them what you have to offer, and you don't really have a step plan to show them, you know, these cities, I can look at this and, and I know in five years, I'm going to make that amount of money. And you can't do that here. We've, we've fallen behind in that, along with the compression. We've done cost of living raises, which are great, and we're grateful for those. But it has caused us to get so far behind at this point. You see these numbers we're, these are all recent. This is not anything over the last several years. This is the last several months. I mean, everybody is looking for quality candidates right now.
The student figure is most likely to go up. We're already halfway through our budget here. So these are all just from their, their fiscal years too.
And we want to be clear too, we're not, we're not looking to, to make Plano money, right? That's not, that's not what this is about. What this is about is, is retention. We want to keep the people, we want, we're never going to pay, right, Plano money. I get that. But what we're trying to do here is we're trying to keep the good people that we have, because we do have a good culture. And it was asked to me, well, if the money's so good somewhere else, why haven't they already left? Well, the reason they haven't already left is because we have a good culture. But the culture will only do so much, because if the salaries are here, we've already seen it happen where people start to leave, right? So if we can get, you know, it's clear, everyone knows this, people will stay somewhere for less money if they're happy. That's, that's clear, right? There's a lot of happy people here. But that only goes so far. And when someone's trying to plan a vacation, for instance, and they realize, well, you know, we, we don't have enough money, you know, maybe they're one income family, and this is what they do, you know, we don't have enough money to plan a vacation. But I could go over here and I could make, you know, $25,000 more a year, right? Well, I could definitely take a vacation on that, right? So it's just one thing. It just takes one thing for one person.
What we're looking for is a plan, to see a real plan come together, something that's real, that's tangible, and it means something, and it's really going to be applied and go somewhere.
Right.
Not a step plan that we're never really, we never really use. A real, a real solution is what we're looking for. I mean, we understand, you're not going to pull the trigger tomorrow and give everybody a $25,000 raise. It's not going to happen. We understand that. We're not looking for that. That's not what we're looking for. We just want y'all to understand what you're getting for your money right now. I promise you, you will not find another fire department this size and a town this size has people that are disqualified, that show up for work every day and are happy to be here every day. And we want to keep that. Because when one leaves, they take two or three with them.
What, what I see here is you guys over the last 20, 15 years since, since you guys moved from a vol, pretty much volunteer fire department over, you build a top notch program. And if we're not careful, like I said, you guys aren't going anywhere. You've been here forever, going to stay forever, you know, till you go fishing. But the problem we're going to have is, is if we don't take care of this, like you don't have a plan, these new people coming in, they don't have that invested interest. They're going to be looking at us as straight as everybody else.
Exactly. And I want to, I want to emphasize that it's not just experience that counts. Experience is good, but it's, it's tenure here. It's experience in the city of Saginaw that matters. Because like I mentioned, all those target hazards, and, and, you know, I mentioned all the obvious target hazards, but a target hazard is something that exceeds the capabilities of your fire department very quickly. Those are nursing homes, those are apartment complexes, those are, you know, things like that, that we are building more and more and more of every day. I mean, you, you know that, you see it. And those things are taxing our resources more and more. Our call volume is getting higher and higher, and we're doing that with the same resources we had.
A decade.
A decade ago. And we can't do it. I mean, or we can do it, obviously we're doing it. But it's, it's not sustainable, you know, over the long term. So.
And I do.
So we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have on any of that.
First of all, I want to commend Chief Spears and what you have done with your crew. You guys are beyond amazing. I've been to other cities. I've watched fire departments show up, tend to situations. First of all, you guys always look professional, every breathing moment that I see you on the street. These other folks, not so much. So that says a lot about Saginaw and the leadership at all levels. Secondly, I've talked to several people who've had to call you guys for help, specifically medical help. And again, the word caring, passionate, professional is what I hear about you guys all the time. And, you know, I really wish we could pay you like Plano does and other cities do. And this is definitely something we need to work on. But I do have one question. I wanted to get that out of the way. You said you'll pay for a lot of your certifications.
Correct.
Approximately, what do each of those certifications cost?
So some of those certifications, some of them range from $200 all the way up to $700 to $900. And a lot, a lot of those certifications that we pay for are required for promotion. So those are not paid for by the city. A lot of our rescue certifications, our technical rescue certifications, a lot of those are paid for through the city, through the fire department, which is part of that budget. But a lot of those, some of us have paid for those ourselves as well. So that's where that number is.
You have a group of people that work here that want to better theirself and better the citizens and, and that are, I mean, you got a lot of, you have a lot of go-getters that work for the fire department. I mean, there's no doubt. So you have guys that are continually putting theirself into leadership classes, or, you know, different types of classes like that, just to better theirself. And of course, you reap the benefits from it, but it's stuff they're doing for theirself as well.
I got a couple of comments. Yeah. I'm in and out of fire stations all the time. And one of the things I approached Chief Spears and Chief Craver, why they don't have an admin? And their response was, we'd rather have a firefighter.
That is 100%.
Them dudes are covered up every day, all day long. I mean, try to get in his office and get a word in edgewise with him because he's doing, he's got paperwork stacked to hear, so does Chief Craver. But they're foregoing that to get us our third firefighter. Just, y'all got to know that.
And, and, and clearly, other cities our size, and you can find, I mean, you could do, you can look these up, or I could do it for you. But other cities our size, they have secretaries, they have assistants, they have more than one person in the fire marshal's office, they have operations chiefs, they have, you know, training chiefs, you know, we're, we're skeletonized on our administration. So just, just food for thought.
From a safety standpoint, we really need to have four, four people on a truck. I mean, there's too many firefighters losing their lives these days or getting disabled, and we can't keep taking chances.
We need to figure this out.
I just want to say I really appreciate you guys taking time, coming, talking to us.
Thank you for having us. We certainly appreciate that.
And I know the citizens love us.
We, we love.
And their police officers.
We love the opportunity. Yeah, we love our police officers too. They, yeah, they do. They, they come over and eat breakfast with us. We're, we're friends.
They actually get along. In some cities, they don't.
I know.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now we have to work on. Okay. Are there any other comments that need to be made? Doug, do you have any other comments?
No, ma'am. I think it was well said. You can tell they were a little nervous, but I think they did a great job. And thank them for their effort.
Thank you very much. Okay, number eight on our agenda is executive session, which we do not have. So number nine is the adjournment. Take the motion.
How many, what's your major?
Charlie's second.
Cindy Hill's second.
Use a paper this time.
Thank you very much, Oliver, the chairman. Appreciate it.
I knew it would.